Let's start that on over again.
Before I cuss you out.
I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the whole meeting held on Tuesday, July 22, 2025, commencing at now 4:32 PM. We've got all council members in attendance, both in person and online. In person, we have Council Vice President Forsyth, council members Anderson and Fields. Online, we have council members Salah Houdin and Stewart, and Council President Vanessa Kritzer, and myself, Council Member Mewa Kamina, chairing. Today, we do have four items on the agenda, no action items, no action to be taken on any of the items today. First, kicking us off, we've got Jenny Liebeck here to present us with the King County Extreme Heat Mitigation Strategy Overview. Welcome.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, council. So I am Jenny Liebeck, Sustainability Manager. And with me today is Danya Ayaz. She is the Climate Preparedness Project Manager in the King County's Executive Climate Office. Just to ground us really quick, as you know, so we are in the middle of the update of the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. And a key outcome of that effort, that we're anticipating through that effort, is really a greater emphasis on climate resilience. We're hearing from the community. We also know those findings from our 2023 Climate Vulnerability Assessment are then being woven into that plan update. But through that, we are also relying on regional efforts to boost our work in the climate resilience space. And so last year, Danya led the development of the Regional Extreme Heat Mitigation Strategy, which was included in your meeting materials. And so we just wanted to take a little bit of time today to highlight that regional strategy and showcase some of the ways that we're scaling solutions to benefit community members in Redmond and across the region. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Danya for a brief overview.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Jenny. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here today to talk about extreme heat. It's been a great couple of weeks to talk about extreme heat. It's always nice when the weather cooperates. I'm really excited to talk with you all about this topic, especially since I've grown up in and around the Redmond area, so I really experienced how heat has changed in the summertime and how this is becoming more of a risk. So like Jenny mentioned, what I really want to cover today is why heat matters in this region, or what the countywide efforts are when it comes to preparing for extreme heat, and how we're collaborating with local partners such as jurisdictions through different forums to be more responsive to community needs when it comes to extreme heat. So first, we're definitely seeing increasing temperatures when it compares to historical baselines, and we can even see this in events like the 2021 Heat Dome, where we saw over 34 mortalities in King County, and also really high-record temperatures on the east side, including up to 116 degrees. So really underscoring why we should be planning for this, especially since different factors can also impact and exacerbate extreme heat, like having more development, less urban tree canopy coverage, more population growth and activity. These are all just some ways that we can experience more extreme heat in an area, so it's important for us to plan for this, especially since not everybody is impacted equally, especially, for example, adults over 65, people with pre-existing health condition, folks who can't afford air conditioning. So when we heard about all these different instances, we heard from our local jurisdiction partners and community residents that we need a more unified approach to extreme heat when it comes to countywide heat action, and that led to the, or that was the impetus for the development of the heat strategy that Jenny mentioned. That was developed in partnership and consultation with over 900 individuals across the county, and that includes local governments through the city, or the King County City's Climate Collaboration, the K4C, different service providers, as well as community-based organizations and residents. And it is a strategy that's intended to serve as a guidebook of heat action that includes 20 actions related to more near-term topics, like, for example, public health communications, all the way to longer-term actions that influence how people are exposed to extreme heat, and that's where we get into things like urban tree canopy or building and energy codes. And the purpose of this is to be a five-year plan, so released in 2024 until 2029, with the understanding that it's not all going to be neatly wrapped up with a bow, but at least you will have worked both internally within King County, as well as with our partners, to make significant progress on these actions. And it's intended to be a, or it's intended to be a countywide strategy, but it will be implemented definitely in heat islands, and we see some of those in Redmond as well, some pretty significant areas of extreme heat. And we see that in a lot of areas around King County. And that's the Redmond heat map over there. It's done by a heat tool that we just released about a week ago, so the areas of yellow and orange are where you see significant, what we term "heat islands" in King County, and the temperatures there can get up to 92 degrees or hotter, depending upon the day. And when it comes to the heat strategy, we've got 20 actions, like I mentioned. I just want to give you a really broad overview and highlight some of the areas where we're partnering with our different local jurisdiction partners to really scale up these efforts, like Jenny mentioned. So just to go through at a really high level, that first category is helping people stay cool and safe indoors, so getting resources to people where they're at, whether it's their homes or public or pri, or community-led cooling centers. The second category is helping people stay cool and safe where they are outdoors, whether it's people experiencing homelessness, folks who work in hot environments, or people that are swimming, so drowning prevention. The third category is focusing more on urban tree canopy coverage for both private property owners and for local jurisdictions, as well as increasing access to green space and preventing the creation of new heat islands. The fourth category is thinking about integrating extreme heat resilience as a lens into long-term planning, whether we're talking about school campuses, building and development codes, or parks and playgrounds. The fifth category is focusing on increasing heat safety awareness, and this is the one that really came up the most in our community engagement. How are we messaging heat in a effective way through multilingual communications and multiple mediums? And the sixth category is focusing on how are we supporting heat action, so building a community of practice with, again, within King County and outside with our partners, and how are we funding these solutions? So I really wanted to just touch on a couple of these actions that really overlap with some of the priorities we've heard from K4C and from the City of Redmond. First, under category one, we're really seeing heat pumps being a really significant solution, so through things like energy smart east side, for example, we're seeing access to cooling for communities and individuals that don't have it before, and this also really aligns with targets, like, for example, building decarbonization and energy efficiency. So this really is a multi-benefit solution when it comes to climate resilience. We're also seeing that more in this need for community-led cooling spaces. That came up really frequently, so how are we increasing community capacity for cooling? And this can manifest in different ways. I know with a couple of our local jurisdiction partners, we've been talking about resilience hubs, but really underscoring how are we getting these resources to community-trusted locations. Another key topic that comes up quite frequently is urban tree canopy, and I know an example is, for example, tree giveaways. I know Redmond participates in those, so how are we supporting our residents with planting trees, maintaining their tree canopy, which is a significant source of shade? And the last one I'll highlight is that priority around multilingual heat communications. So how are we coordinating across jurisdictions and throughout county and our subject matter experts to ensure that we're getting messaging that is clear, accurate, and actually reaching communities? So coming up with sort of a repository for a lot of this messaging. And it is really important for us to continue coordinating with our partners through avenues like the K4C and other different work groups to ensure that we are reaching the residents that are the most at risk and being responsive to their needs. So really grateful to City of Redmond for being a partner through the K4C and through all those other avenues that we mentioned, and happy to take any questions as well. There's time for that.
Thank you. I would, it's interesting that we're having this conversation today. When I took a look at the heat map for the United States today, when I took a look at it, of course, I'm not measuring it, but I would say conservatively, about 70% of the nation right now is considerably above average in temperature. And for a change, we're actually below. So, you know, for the listening public, if you're enjoying the lower-than-normal temperatures, you know, waking up this morning and it was, you know, 65 until late morning, you know, this is a nice reprieve that we're having, and just kind of highlights how dynamic we need to be in our solutions, that we're going to need to have more flexibility in our approaches, both for bitter cold, as well as the absolute heat that we saw back in 2021. Council, do you have any comments or questions? Are council members online? Do you have any questions? Councilmember Stewart, and then coming back to Councilmember Fields.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the chance to hear more about the connectivity of these strategies. I have two questions, I guess. First is just addressing how frequently the extreme heat incidents also overlap in our area with extreme smoke events, and I wonder if you could speak to the connectivity of that issue? And then I'm particularly interested in hearing a little bit more about the community-led cooling places, and having these very trusted places serve as those resource hubs. I'm curious if you have any examples that our city could learn from? We, of course, have a few city buildings and a great partnership with our library, so those tend to be the places we are able to keep open during business hours, but we do struggle with the evenings, evenings still being particularly warm for homes that aren't, that don't have great resilience. And so I'm just wondering if you've seen some examples of community-led spots that we could learn a little bit from? Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you for both of those questions. I think they both touch on really key topics that have come up in our engagement. For the first one, extreme heat overlapping with extreme smoke from wildfire events is a fairly key concern, especially since I know folks are saying it's harder for them to then open their windows or get that cooling reprieve, and it also really highlights the importance of having more filtration when it comes to indoor air quality. And the way that we're addressing that right now is working really closely with our Public Health Department in order to get that messaging out there for ways that people can access resources related to heat or really to extreme weather smoke, like, for example, HEPA filtration, and that also highlights why things like heat pumps are a really significant solution for us, since I know some heat pumps also include air filtration. So that's been sort of why we're focusing a lot of our efforts on that, but right now, I think what we are focusing on is mostly that joint messaging, so that's where that multilingual messaging comes in, so people are aware of the risk, especially for more sensitive populations, and are aware when to stay indoors and how to keep them cool and safe indoors, and that's something we want to continue building upon. So for your second question, that is a relatively newer area when we're talking about community-trusted cooling locations. We just heard that some people may not feel as safe in public trusted, or in public locations, whether they're not aware that they exist, whether they're not sure who's going to be there. So it is important to lean upon some of these community-trusted cooling locations, especially since they're often already utilized, and there really is no set definition of it, which is what makes it really unique and why this action in particular is flexible. Some examples of community-trusted locations that we've encountered is, for example, a CBO in Kent that runs a clinic that their elders tend to visit, but doesn't have any sort of cooling, so they would be a great candidate for us supporting them, whether it's with portable air conditioners, finding funding to install a heat pump. But it can also range to different faith-based facilities that people tend to visit. It can be even the offices of different CBOs, since we heard from another focus group that they would go there if they knew that there was cooling. So this action really does vary, and it can even lead up all the way up into that idea of resilience hubs. Some examples that we've seen and we've discussed through the K4C is, for example, City of Issaquah. I know they have a great network of resilience hubs, and they activated theirs during the bomb cyclone that occurred, and even though that's a different context than heat, I think it's a really great example of locations that people tend to frequent already in their day-to-day or recreationally, so they tend to congregate there when these events happen, and because they're also these trusted locations, or they're outfitted with things like, for example, generators, or solar battery storage, or heat pumps, or air conditioning, then people will have the resources they need. So again, this is a really new area. We're still determining, you know, how can we support this? Where is that funding going to come from? But since we have some great examples in King County, we want to continue building upon that through the K4C. Let me know if you have follow-up questions. Happy to chat more.
Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So in my mind, or what I've done for myself is break this into sort of three categories. One is we're building that resiliency, sustainability on a personal level, meaning we're finding ways to make people deal with it through things in their homes, or comfort kits, or cooling stations. That's sort of the treating of the symptoms, and super important, I'm not diminishing that, but I'm focusing on the second category of things is this outreach, and the other part of it that you talked about is how do we mitigate or reduce the impact? And what we've had for years is sort of a blind eye from our developer slash government community. We've created a lot of these heat islands by the way we built out our city, not just Redmond, but, and even today, I was talking with a developer who expressed concern about our removal of trees. So when, when we do this outreach and when you update the sustainability plan, are we, I think it's important to go to the residents and say, here's how you can do better. Here are some technology for your home, some expensive, some not expensive. But, but on that community outreach, I think we need to go to some of the causes, too. So I'm hoping that that's part of that scope of work. And then the third thing is, and I'm really interested in the update to our sustainability plan, because a lot of these things are pretty expensive, and there's going to be a very big demand for heat pumps and upgrades to their homes, et cetera, et cetera, and they're going to want help with that. Not everybody can afford it. So I'm interested in how this city is actually going to make these ideas and plans work, be feasible, be practical, be affordable, be something that we can actually help and partner with other, hopefully, other sources of funding. I'm assuming that that will be in your plan.
Yeah, we're planning to, we're trying to look at some of the high-priority actions, because to your point, we understand that there's a lot of scaling that needs to happen with a lot of this, right? We've spent the last five years building the foundation, and now how do we scale? And so, and we're all grappling with that. I mean, King County has had some interesting conversations, too, on this topic, so yes, we definitely will be part of the plan.
And, you know, I always fear that I sound like pessimistic or not upbeat and happy. This is an amazing report. I read every page. I will read it again. By the way, is the little sunshine on the page numbers, do you think that was on purpose?
Yes. With lower funnel design.
And this is a great foundation for information, but, but there's a lot in front of this. Yes.
No, absolutely. I really appreciate the comment that you're flagging, because that is something that we heard, too, where, you know, not everyone is going to be able to afford heat pumps, or even if we talk about building retrofits, there may be some pushback when it comes to the different stakeholders involved in that process. So that is why we're hoping for this multi-pronged approach that you see in the strategy, and why it's so important to have that regional collaboration, to learn from each other, because if, you know, we're not able to go straight to active cooling, then perhaps we can still implement some passive cooling elements. So, you know, if we're able to have some more standards around, if we're using more reflective building materials, or even if we're able to use our communications to suggest to folks, this is when you close your blinds. This is, these are more, less expensive heat reflective window films that you can add, that, you know, we've tested out with public health, for example, or these are public locations that you can go to if you're feeling really hot, for example. Just ensuring that we have multiple avenues for people to turn to, that's sort of what we're hoping to do by meeting people where they are, and it's not going to be a one-size solution. What's going to happen in Redmond is going to be different than what happens in Burien versus South Seattle, so that's why I think it's really important to continue convening our partners, and also having these different elements reflected in your plans and having conversations like these, so we can ensure that we're being responsive for the communities that we're serving. So thank you for highlighting that.
No, and I appreciate that. And since I sort of called out the develop, developer community, I want to call them out in a different way. There's a lot of what they call green upgrade technology that is emerging, and they're not expensive necessarily, you know, venting and a lot of different things. So I'm hope, maybe we can do a contest. We love to do contests. Come up with your best ideas, and you'll get two points towards a tax exemption or something. I don't know.
Any other comments or questions from council? Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and really thoughtful work on this, and appreciate the work that our staff does as well, to be able to ensure that our community can be resilient. I think that, in particular, our efforts around the heat pump campaign are particularly important to what Councilmember Stewart mentioned, when we get these moments of extreme heat with extreme smoke, people can't get out of their houses, that they have that cooling opportunity, and at the same time, it can be electric and be greener. It's really positive. Just more of a note and a thought, I guess I'm curious to get your thoughts on it. I feel like so much of the battle on some of this, when we have the mo, these, the crisis moments of extreme heat, is around communications and communicating what resources are there, how people can know about that, actually, in extreme weather events, even we saw with the bomb cyclone, and we heard from people who just still didn't know what, what were the resources available. So I guess I'm just curious if you have any other additional thoughts on just the best practices that we might consider as a city to ensure that, that we are effectively communicating as well, the resources that we have?
Thank you. Yeah, communication is definitely a big one, and that's why we're trying to push more towards this idea of year-round communication about extreme heat, just because we are seeing these rising temperatures earlier. So what we were hearing from our community, our, the residents, our community-based organizations, is if we can start this messaging kind of earlier in the season, so people are aware of what to prepare, and also what exactly they should be doing, and what things they should have stored in their homes, since we've heard that when people go to maybe buy fans or buy kind of like, you know, even fruit, it tends to be out in grocery stores, so really emphasizing ahead of time and having consistent messaging, like with, for example, our Public Health Department or our Burn C. Management Department, coordinating on that is probably, is going to be pretty big. Another big one that we hear is this idea of utilizing trust and messenger networks, and a big one that we wanted to do more work on in King County is working with our healthcare providers, since we've heard that, you know, people may tend to trust, whether it's their faith-based organization leader, maybe it's their healthcare provider, but how can we work with messaging with these folks that people trust to ensure that they're aware of extreme heat? And the last one is also working with service providers to get more heat messaging out there. Since there are, for example, seniors tend to work with different CBOs or even senior centers, can we directly get messaging to them so they're able to distribute it, or even integrate it into their programming? So people that are the most at risk that work with these different service providers or social programs are then kind of being looped in, in terms of the kind of day-to-day activities or the recreational areas that they already tend to frequent. So that's been some of the ideas that we've had. We have more work to do when it comes to implementation and testing out those ideas, but that's just some of the high-level things that we heard from our community engagement.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Don't see any. My, I wanted to add, being a resident here in downtown for the last eight years, experiencing the shift in climate that we've had here locally, there's, there's things that are noticeably different and things that add to the increased heat on, on that heat map, right? You can walk down the street and in between certain buildings, when the sun hits a building just right, you can definitely feel a change in temperature. As we're continuing to build out in our urban development districts, you know, we're going to be adding a considerable amount of housing within the next 10 years, and we can assume that temperatures are only going to continue to fluctuate and remain dynamic and have some more extreme heat situations, particularly if somebody is moving in on the north side of a building, and they don't have any crossbreeze, and there are only windows to the north, the apartment is just going to continue to get hotter and hotter inside of it. So my question is around, or comment is wondering, what, what can we do? Kind of touching with my colleague Steve Fields, Councilmember Fields' comment about the development community, you can, are there incentives that we can add? We can talk about heat pumps. Majority, majorly, majorly is focusing on single-family homes. I know that they are possible for multifamily units, buildings, however, they're quite complex, but looking to see, like, what, what can we be doing for our multifamily buildings, as this is where we are going to be contributing to the heat dome in, in Redmond, and we are doing it, as he said, by design. So then what can we put in place to, to mitigate that? In addition to tree canopy, that's great, however, we need to have cooling, especially for some of our more vulnerable. Speaking to our community members last, actually, for the last three years now, at Fair Winds specifically, and their growing concern over such things.
Thank you. I am really glad you highlighted that, since this is a topic area that I'm personally really excited about, where I think there's a lot of creativity and new development happening when it comes to this idea of passive cooling, so basically the materials that you use in development that naturally lend more of a cooling effect than relying on things like air conditioning or heat pumps. And recently, we have been working with a group called the New Buildings Institute. They're a nonprofit that recently released a heat code overlay, which is essentially model codes that have to do more with cooling when it comes to both single-family and multifamily, and we are working with them to kind of adapt that to King County and then potentially propose it to the Washington State Building Code Council. I know there's a multifamily segment that's coming up in 2027 that we're preparing for, but it's this idea of how can we institute better guidelines when it comes to more passive cooling? So this could be things like the kind of paint they're using, it could be more reflectivity, this could be triple-pane windows, this could be cool roofing. So there are elements that you can include when constructing or retrofitting housing that naturally lends more of a cooling impact. I think it's just, A, trying to get it more passed into ordinances, or B, then making a case for why it makes economic sense to then integrate these or to use these development practices instead. So that's something that we're interested in looking more into with the New Buildings Institute, and coming up with a guide and seeing where it makes sense and where we're able to kind of influence that into more building and development codes where possible. But in the meantime, hearing for areas that are already constructed, we've heard that then, what, then what are we going to do about existing building stock? So I think a lot of that is where we provide that, what we're interested in developing is kind of a guideline of more, what are some of the more sure-expensive things that you're able to do, but not everybody can even afford or use a portable air conditioner? So what are some of the lower costs that, things that people can do? And this could be things that are as behavioral as, check the temperature outdoors versus indoors and know when to close your blinds. This can be things like, this is how you can use those window films that I was talking about earlier. So there really is, again, not one particular solution, but I think there are a lot of avenues that we can approach this through. A lot of it is just going to be making the case for it and emphasizing why it's important when it comes to new construction, and then connecting people with the resources they need and the awareness when it comes to existing housing stock.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for all of that information. Clearly, we are pretty passionate about this, as we had allotted 10 minutes for it, and we just took up about 25, so.
Wow.
Absolutely. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, 20 seconds. Clarification. I wasn't aware that this was going on. This is a great body of work. When did this, was the city involved in this evaluation, analysis, study groups, and, and when did we know as a city that this was being done by King County?
So King County received a grant from FEMA through the Building Resilient Infrastructures and Communities Grant to start this work in late 2022, so that's how long it's been in development, and then I was hired about February 2023 to start this work. So it's been in development since then, and we definitely looped, looped in partners, including local jurisdictions from the beginning. So our primary means of interacting with local jurisdictions, including Redmond, has been through the K4C, but we also did have local jurisdictions involved in a couple of different work groups, one being the Extreme Heat Response Work Group, and I can't recall exactly if I had a participation from that one, but I would, it would be pretty likely, because we had over 42 folks in that, in that group. We also had an Urban Forestry Work Group, and that's the Urban Forestry Forum, and that is a group of urban forestry professionals in King County, and I know Redmond is a part of that group as well. So there are definitely lots of different touchpoints, but it was mostly checking in with K4C and running ideas through them. And we also, now that we're in the implementation phase, we are also continuously meeting with K4C, and this is one of our topic conversations. We have a Climate Preparedness and Equity subgroup where we bring up this conversation and keep talking about different aspects like wildfire, smoke, resilience hubs, extreme heat. So it is an ongoing and active conversation. Yeah. Thanks for the question.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, and thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Moving on to our next item is the Teen Services Engagement Update. Joining us is Deputy Director Zach Hoefner. Just as a reminder for the listening public, that this is our, our services engagement, and this does not pertain to, it pertains to services and not facilities. Hi, welcome. And Director Hamilton, welcome.
Good evening, council. For the record, Zach Hoefner, Parks Deputy Director. I'm here for the second official touchpoint with council after launching our efforts to the public on March 28th for the Redmond Teen Services Engagement Project. The final report on Redmond Teen Services Engagement is currently being compiled and will be brought to council and the community at the September 9th study session. In my previous PES touch on May 27th, I shared a lot of metrics and data points to date on our engagement efforts. My goal today is to provide a high-level overview of My goal today is to provide a high-level overview of several themes we've heard throughout this process, as well as take any council questions or comments that we can come prepared to talk about at the September 9th study session when we present that final report. Among the diverse perspectives and priorities heard from the community, the following consistent themes did emerge. Teens and adults expressed the need for safe, dedicated teen spaces that allow teens to have a sense of ownership and autonomy, where they can safely and comfortably explore their identities without judgment, particularly for our low-income and LGBTQIA+ teens. Other frequently mentioned needs include outlets for creative expression and development of life skills through access to programming and resources in music performance and production, creative arts, career exploration, mental health, financial literacy, mentorship, and volunteering opportunities. Teens would like to have programs designed and led by teens with the city's support for providing resources for implementation. Suggestions from community members for additional programming included STEM, sports, creative arts, and professional, professional development-related activities. Teens and adults frequently emphasize their desire for free or low-cost services and programming to reduce barriers to participation. Teens and adults would like improved transportation access to and from Redmond neighborhoods and programming locations with preferences for bus transportation over light rail, and suggestions to have shuttle services to residential areas. Teens and adults stress the need for teen services and programming in downtown Redmond location to maintain easy access for teens and their families. Distributing the locations of programs offered to other areas such as Merrymore Village and Overlake could increase access for residential neighborhoods. To better reach and engage teens in Redmond, teens suggested communicating through channels such as Instagram, schools, and teen-oriented community events. Teens are also more likely to engage in activities that are endorsed by other teens. Which brings me to something that was brought up from the start of our engagement process and shared, I believe, at the study session in April. And to be honest, has played out recently in public comment, that there is a very differing opinion amongst our own teen demographic, particularly our RYPAC group, our drop-in users, our musicians, and I would also add a fourth group to that, as we did our community engagement, our Red Tab or Redmond Teen Advisory Board at KCLS was a very active group that gave us a lot of great feedback. Teens also emphasize the importance of city teen services staff who have empathy, share life experiences, and are relatable to teens. Ocurring alongside the engagement process was the transition of teen services and programming from the Old Firehouse Teen Center to the Redmond Community Center at Merrymore Village and other city facilities. Many teens and community members expressed connection and emotional ties to OFH, expressing appreciation for its downtown location, as well as its focus on music and arts programming and education. Feedback on the new RCCMV teen drop-in space expressed a desire for teens to have more opportunities for engagement and an understanding on the things that impact them. Teens also appreciated the presence of city staff who reflect their identities and values. One thing that I found, as I've been going through this process, and I'm sure that councils also talked about during Derby Days, was when community wants to know more, wants to get involved with their city or their local government, there's keywords that the city typically uses to produce those in its engagement, its reports, its questionnaires, its surveys, et cetera, and that absolutely will be compiled and captured in our final report. But for the listening public, I also want to make sure that they know that staff are always available, whether that be an in-person meeting, an email, a Q Alert, et cetera. So even though our teen engagement report will be wrapped up and will be presented to city council on September 9th, I also want to make sure that everyone knows that we are available to hear you out, to answer your questions through those mediums. With that, I'd like to ensure that there's open dialogue, and if there's anything in particular that council or community wants to see or hear from us at the study session on September 9th, I'd love to get that feedback or questions now so that I can come prepared when we present in September. With that, I'd like to open up for any questions.
Council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Fields, and then Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thanks, Zach. You brought up a topic that, I guess, I don't need to hear about it today, but I would like to hear about it during the study session, and you sort of subdivided the teen demographic into, I think it was three categories. On the surface, that feels weird to me, that we would make that distinction. I'm not saying that there's not a whole variety of voices, but for us to categorize feels a little bit odd. I'd like to learn more about that and how we can begin to bridge people's needs, desires, concerns. Towards the end, and I've spoken about this quite a bit over the past few months, and that's, I would like for the city to be trusted again by as many of the teens as we possibly can. So when we break it into different categories, then there's the risk of, you know, building bridges with one, maybe not all three or four, however many it ends up being. So I don't, I'm not necessarily being suggestive. I don't have an idea on how to do it, but I do hope that when you come back, you can talk more about that.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I'm really grateful for the recognition of the different user groups that you just broke apart and understanding that the teens at RYPAC are going to have a different need and experience than the musicians. So I'm grateful that we're recognizing that now, because I do think that what we're currently hearing from community is a group that feels like they've been left out. So I appreciate that we're going into this knowing that we're going to try to capture everyone. The one question that I did have for the survey results is about age groups, and are you going to break out, you know, current users through age groups and past users through age groups? And are we going to be able to see what some of those experiences have been and the lasting impact of, you know, maybe we have 40-year-old adults that give us feedback? I think there's wisdom in reflection, so I'm just interested if that's going to be part of the presentation.
Yeah, great question. And yeah, so similar to our community listening sessions, where we tried to break out into affinity groups, the questionnaire was really brought and subdivided into teens, current teens, service providers, adults, and alumni. So there goes extensive, in the appendancy section, of breaking that up into different groups.
Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the study session, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. One is I've heard from a couple of parents who are interested in what the future is for our adaptive programming for teens, and so would love to hear a little bit about that, and if you've got any feedback around adaptive needs. Secondly, curious to hear, just as part of the kind of reporting back on the process, what some of the thinking was with the approach to gathering this feedback, in particular the experience with the facilitators, just so that way we can have lessons learned for the future as well. And then, blanking on my third one, but so those are two. I'll send you the third one via email. Thanks.
Taking a look around for any other questions or comments, as we've got, you know, several of us online and in person. Councilmember Fields.
I just want to put in my hope that the teens will appreciate the life skills, part of the available services. I think that's really important. So I'm not sure how you market that or sell it or convince people it's a great idea to know how to do their tax return or whatever, but it's super cool, so. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart, online.
Thank you. Appreciate the conversation, and I appreciate the reminder from Council President Kritzer about capturing some of the lessons learned and reflections on our approach with the listening sessions and the like. My, kind of two questions remaining. The first is a bit of a different take on maybe one that's been raised in the room, and that is that we've heard loud and clear that dedicated space and programings for musicians is a hallmark of the teen services that Redmond has offered in the past and wants to continue to offer in the future. Deputy Director Hoefner, when you spoke to us before, you shared about some of the surprises you were hearing out there as you were tabling and interacting with the community and folks not knowing about the services that we offered for teens here in Redmond. So I'm going to be listening really closely for what else is truly uniquely needed by the city in this space where there is already a lot of programming going on for youth in our community? Where are those gaps that the city is best positioned to fill? And then the second one is, I'll be curious to hear how the findings of the engagement influence how the city is thinking about implementing the park plan, specifically our call in the park plan to serve teens all across the city. For example, the Overlake Urban Center, it does not yet have as many teens as it's about to, but with 5,500 units in development and lots of family-sized units going in, it's just going to continue to be a place that has more and more demand for programs and services. So thanks so much. Looking forward to the conversation in September.
Council President Kritzer.
I remembered my last question as Councilmember Stewart was speaking. If we could just get, because I think to the point around kind of what new things we might add based on these learnings or what kinds of changes we might make to existing programming, would just be interesting to understand kind of the roadmap of how we take the information that was, that we gathered through this and implement that into programming, like what that looks like in terms of a timeline roadmap. Thank you.
Okay, looking around the room and seeing no others. My two cents, I just want to acknowledge the amount of work that's gone into this over the past four or so months, and that we've been gathering feedback. There's been ample opportunities to, for folks to, if they're attending, and also both adults and teens, to weigh in and let us know as a city what's important to them, and just gathering all this information. It's pretty robust, as well as reaching out to community organizations, also acknowledging how as a staff, you're taking a look at what are the current needs that we're hearing right now? And to Councilmember Stewart's point on, we also need to be thinking about the future. Having 5,500 units come in, they're not all there yet, but we do know that that is what's coming in the future and kind of doing that, that planning and holding the tension of now and not yet. So thank you, staff, for all that you're doing. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Implementation Update, otherwise known as the ESAP update. Joining us is Jenny Liebeck. Jenny, welcome back.
Thank you so much. So we included a number of updates in that, in the attachment A of this item. So I'm just going to focus on the ESAP refresh section. So if you do have questions on any other parts, I'm happy to answer, but did want to take the time to talk about the refresh. So just as a reminder, so we are updating the 2020 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. The goal with this process is to create a prioritized and actionable five-year strategy that encompasses both municipal operations and community. So through this process, through the ESAP refresh process, we are refining the plan to focus on reducing emissions while also building community resilience to climate impacts, as we just touched on a bit earlier. The updated plan will also include refreshed key indicators or key performance indicators so that we can better track progress towards our goals. And then all the while, we are working to build the capacity of community members to take action and also raise awareness about climate solutions, because we know that implementation of this work doesn't stop just because we are in a planning cycle. So we provided council with an update on the planned community engagement work, and that happened during the May study session. And so since then, we have been working to activate that community engagement work, and all the while, our consultant team has been doing a lot of data analysis, which has been really fun and a good way that this plan is kind of building on the work that we're doing. We're leveraging a very data-driven approach. And that data-driven approach has now culminated into what we call a proposed plan framework, what we are calling the Five Big Moves. So these are the priority pathways that support meaningful progress towards the city's sustainability and climate goals. And that actually was attached to the study session item, if you are looking for that attachment. And so the Five Big Moves that we're proposing are to make existing buildings better, to build resilient and efficient new buildings, to provide safe and sustainable transportation, achieve zero waste of resources, and to create a resilient community and environment. So we hosted multiple workshops last week to really dive in on these big moves and get feedback to inform strategies and actions, barriers that the community may have, so that we can better understand ways and that we can support progress and action towards those strategies. So the intent now, moving forward, is that we will be building out that draft Five Big Moves framework by drafting specific strategies and actions based on questionnaire results. So we have a questionnaire that's open right now, and will close on August 1st. And again, we had multiple workshops with staff and community members and focus groups, as well as community outreach that's being done by our nonprofit partners. And all the goal here, the goal here is then to really prioritize and focus a plan so we can make meaningful progress. So we are now kind of in a synthesizing and processing mode, and that will culminate now to, we will be hosting a community picnic in Anderson Park on August 23rd, and that will be to get the community's feedback on proposed or draft strategies and actions, again, based on all of the feedback we've been hearing over the past few months. And so we will be reviewing all of that information with council during the September 23rd study session, so that's the next item on the agenda, and then use, and get council's feedback on those actions, and then use the October study session that we have with council to get a direction on a draft plan. So it's moving very quickly, so again, just wanted to make sure and highlight these milestones for council, so that you're ready for them. So again, we'll have a little bit of a lull for you all this summer, and then come September and October and November, December, it will be a busy season. And we are targeting council adoption of the updated plan by December. And then just a reminder as well, so we have partnered with three community-based organizations to support the plan, the plan update. So we are providing them with funding so that they can engage and activate their respective community members. So we have trusted messengers, and again, are trying to reach beyond the choir and beyond the network that normally engages with city outlets. And also a reminder that our ESAP questionnaire is open through August 1st, so please continue to promote that, take that questionnaire yourself if you have not done so already. And yeah, and we're continuing to try and leverage really creative outreach techniques as well. Again, tabling, community workshops, we hosted our first trivia night, which was very fun, again, trying to do a picnic in the park and things like that, again, to bring folks in and try and meet them where they're at. So again, that's, again, trying to mesh the, some two items here, the study session and our implementation update, but a lot happening. And again, all that will culminate in that September 23rd study session with council, where you'll start to see all these pieces come together. So any questions or comments on the framework? And I can put that in the chat. It was attached to the study session. It was an attachment to the study session item specifically, and that's, again, this big milestone that we've been working on with the community thus far.
Looking online, kicking it off, will be Council President Kritzer and then Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks for the work on this and also organizing an opportunity to engage with community this summer, letting us know about that. Hopefully, councilmembers can join in too in that picnic. And just wanted, yeah, to ask about kind of two things in advance of the study session. So one would be if you can clarify within the Five Big Moves, what that was in our initial plan is being a little bit de-prioritized? I think that would be helpful, because I see in some ways in these Five Big Moves, what we had in our last plan re-prior, kind of reorganized into a way of talking about, like at first, I, for example, I'll say, I thought that maybe natural climate solutions weren't really in there, but I really do see them in big move number five. So I think it would just be helpful to know, are there any things that we're kind of, we're deciding not to focus on that we had in our scope of focus? And if some things were bringing to the forefront, and that makes sense to me. Speaking of natural climate solutions, I think one thing I don't see within that resilient community, as kind of some of the details, but I'm sure it'll go into some of the details within that big move, is just thinking about kind of restoration and the ways some of the stewardship investments into our public lands that we have, just to make sure that we're preparing a lot of the lands that we already have for the impacts of climate change, which I think fits into some of our vegetation management efforts, but also as we think about the health of our streams and waterways and some of the work around salmon recovery in particular. So just want to make sure that that's landing in there. It shows up well in our current ESAP, and would love to make sure that we see that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate this. The big five, as they're going to be known, are really exciting because they're so tangible and memorable. And as was just said, it seems like we can find- And as was just said, it seems like we can find a lot of what is in the current draft, or the current plan in here. It's a matter of focusing. So I agree that we should be very clear with the Council and the public about what are the substantive updates, and not simply just the rebranding updates. It's going to be important to keep that clear. As an example of that, we have some really big goals, especially over the next half-decade, that have deadlines in 2030. So this is going to be the thing that I'm going to probably ask a lot over the next couple of years, but how does this reorg of the ESAP keeping us on track to achieve, for example, net-neutral municipal operations by 2030? I think for some of these really big ones, it'll be important to be really clear how this updated ESAP is putting us on a path to closing that gap over the next five years. And then Jenny, just because you've been going through this, this isn't exactly a question for our study session. We are happy to take this offline, but it is the season of Ledge Agenda Writing, and so as the Council and as the Sound Cities Association and the Association of Washington Cities, in all of these bodies, we are beginning to put together our legislative agendas for 2026. And as you and your team went through this with community, if there are things that are the G-gollies, we really wish the state would take action on this, that, or the other thing, because it is a barrier to achieving this plan, those are the things I'd like to hear about and make sure that we're including in our plans for the next Ledge Agenda. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
So back when we created the ESAP and the Emergency Declaration, one of the one of the things I tried to emphasize and stress is, it's not good enough to go fast. It's, we have to go fast enough. And I think you've accomplished something in these five big moves, five pages, that I've never seen in my entire career, both across private sector and public sector, and that you've captured the spirit of what we need to do in these five pages. Yeah, there are details that aren't there. But this message and this, these conclusions that we've come to of what we need to do are exactly what gives us a chance to move fast enough. And there's still a lot of work ahead, as we talked about in your previous item. How do we convince a reluctant or a skeptical group of people who don't see this in the same way that many of us do? But I just want to really applaud these five pages of messaging. It's really spectacular.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Council? Seeing none. Jenny, thank you for bringing this forward. Again, similar comment to what I had made with Parks a minute ago with, you know, it's the tension between what is now and what are we planning? And, you know, we're looking at just, you know, whether it's half a decade, a full decade, things are about to move very, very fast here, and taking a look at, okay, well, what is our, like, one of the big moves in looking at the demand on electricity? You know, we're about to put a significant load on it, and if we don't make fast changes, to my colleague's point, you know, are we moving fast enough? Are we getting out and ahead a bit with the anticipation of the growth that we're going to have? So thank you for moving this forward. And I'd like to say, and I just wanted to confirm this, that on the big moves, that there's no, is there any order to any of the numbers, like, big move number one, is it, is that the number one priority, or do they all work hand in hand?
That's a good question. First two, energy is our largest source of emissions. So there is definitely a big emphasis, right, on those first two big moves? So, and transportation is our third largest source of emissions, but that's not to say, right, the resilience piece, it's like foundational crosscutting, so they're all very important. But if you look at just greenhouse gas emissions, those first three buckets are certainly going to be, represent the largest source of emissions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Continuing on to our next item is the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Implementation Update for July 2025. Jenny will be remaining with us for that.
Yeah, and so message is basically the same of the kind of update that I just provided. So for this September 23rd study session, the intent is that we'll have completed some of the community engagement specifically around the actions, right? So it's all culminating into this point. So at that study session, we'll be bringing you kind of the draft strategies and actions to get Council's feedback, and we'll be sharing what we've heard from the community as well. So you'll have that information. And then all of that that we gather from Council at that September 23rd session will then go right, very quickly into a draft plan. And then in October, we'll be bringing that plan to Council then to start getting your feedback on that, so we can get that adoption in December, hopefully. So anyway, so nothing really to rehash with this. And I will be, there's again, a lot's going to happen over the next month that will be put into this as well. So definitely more to come, but that is the intent for that September 23rd study session. And you all gave me some great feedback. If there's any other pieces too you want to make sure that we see or highlight at that meeting, would love to hear your feedback.
Any further requests for feedback for this? Council President Kritzer, online?
I don't have any feedback on this process. I did just was curious if you gave us a quick update. What's the timeline for the future for the Solarise Eastside Campaign? It was great to read your update, but I was just curious, like, how long is that projected to go, and do we have the chance to kind of continue that forward?
Yeah, so for the Solarise campaign, that basically has closed to new, on July 3rd is when it effectively closed to new folks coming into the program. We did ask our, the, our nonprofit partner if we could extend that, and he, in working with the contractors, they actually are at capacity, and so they were not able to extend. So basically whoever's in the pipeline for that work will be able to, you know, do their assessments and take advantage of that lower rate, but we aren't able to bring any other new individuals into that program now. And then with the federal, the federal government is ending those tax credits, and so basically, any systems effectively need to be installed by December 31st of this year to be able to take credit in that incentive. And so we see solar installs likely dropping significantly in the new year.
Thank you. I think it would be interesting, you know, once we, it seems like we're getting some of the data back, because we have some that have already moved to install, but there's a lot who've gotten the consultation. So once we get a fuller picture of how many people took that up, and also as we start to suss out the impacts from the federal changes, just if we want to keep incentivizing solar in our community, what we might do as a city, I think would be worth for us having that conversation, maybe as part of the ESAP update.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful, Council. Are there any other questions or comments for Jenny today? Well, seeing none, we have reached the end of today's agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned.